It is on four thirty. Call the New Bern Housing Authority for the conditions made in order. We got real call please Stephanie.
Commissioner Bangle.
Here.
Commissioner Blackman.
She let me know that she wouldn't be here this afternoon. She had an appointment with her son.
Uh Commissioner Hough.
Here.
Commissioner Outlaw.
Here.
Commissioner Powell.
You wouldn't be able to make.
Um Commissioner Reddick.
Here.
Commissioner Scott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Um let's ask you, anybody um register for um public comments?
Uh no sir.
All right, this time we're probably gonna review, but take a look at the minutes and um so then they need to be addressed within their uh change whatever need to be noted.
From the packet that I sent out to you all, there were two corrections that I had to make. One was um the cover sheet for the minutes said March and it should have been May. And then on one of the resolutions, when we get to it, there was a word, just one word change.
What is it? Oh no, never mind. I'll ask it later.
I'm happy to make the motion to adopt the minutes as stated.
I'm happy to second.
All in favor, any more question or comments about it? All in favor of approving the minutes as as stated, uh please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The minutes have been approved as stated. Finance report.
Good afternoon. We'll start with the total operating revenue for Trent Court. It's three hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars and seventeen cents. New Bern Towers, four hundred forty-five thousand fifty-one dollars and five cents. Down to the operating spending for Trent Court, four hundred seventy-one thousand six hundred fifty dollars and eighty-eight cents. For CHI, twenty thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. For the Ross Grant, thirty thousand two hundred four dollars and thirty-one cents. And for New Bern Towers, three hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. Down to the bottom, the total net income for Trent Court is four hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. The administrative cost is zero, CHI business activity, negative twenty thousand five hundred thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. And for the Ross Grant, negative thirty thousand two hundred and four dollars and thirty-one cents. For New Bern Towers, ninety-five thousand seventy-three dollars and thirty.
The uh the Ross Grant, is that the total for the first six months of the year?
As of May thirty-first.
So there have been no drawdowns.
We are working on that. It's a permission thing with HUD.
Right, uh I remember.
Hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be on the concept of that. And get them out of the name.
Thank you for working on that.
Thank you.
More questions or comment about the uh finance report?
I make a motion to accept the finances as presented.
Second.
All in favor of approving the uh financial report as stated. Think five by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Financial report has been approved. Executive Director Report.
All right, thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. Um first, let me start off by um saying that um myself, Mr. Barner and Fred Ford from Starbender Architect, we met with um the local um historic preservation offices talking about the demolition at the Trent Court property. And they are all excited about it and they um you know, are willing to work with us and to approve our application, which we'll we'll need to submit to them. The only thing that they may address with us is the possibility of keeping one of the buildings on the property. Um you know, during their discussion, of course, they can't um state whether they want to keep one or not until we actually submit an application, but that may be um something that they may require us to do. We're not really sure at this point. And if we have to keep one, it's gonna be uh one of the buildings in the flood zone, not one of the buildings in the area where we can't actually build apartments and um develop. And I see the look on your face.
Well, I mean, I've always heard we were gonna keep one, but I never thought they would want in flood area.
I know.
I believe the plan calls for us to keep one in the flood zone so that it can be used as a a pavilion or something.
Yeah, just, yeah, a public space. Also, because if we keep one in the area that we're gonna redevelop, that takes away from what we can actually do there.
Right.
Like we can do so much more there without having uh one of those buildings that we're not gonna use for anything at all.
Can they, can they legally though restrict you from doing that? I mean, make you keep a building?
Yes ma'am, from what what they're telling me now, if if you can.
I gotta think about that one. But and and that is your meeting with SHIPPO, not the local.
The local, the local, the local, not SHIPPO.
Are you, are you in design review with them?
Um we're ready to.
Present to design review? Okay, so you're in consultation.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
And so that's when they can either say yea or nay.
Right.
Um Commissioner Scott has been in meetings with us where that building was going back and forth.
So this is the story presentation.
Commission, the local. I'm gonna pull the guidelines if SHIPPO.
Force you to keep a building if you don't want it.
Right.
Then the local should not be able to. That's usually the guideline for, I'll pull them.
What are you gonna do with the building? What's, are you gonna just own it up or is it?
Yeah, we'll secure it so that it looks pretty, but we're not gonna use it for anything at all.
I thought, I thought originally Reggie had talked about maybe raising it up and and taking down the walls and using it as like a pavilion for a park or something.
That's a possibility.
So we could outfit it so that at least it has public use uh as opposed to just sitting there as eh as a dormant building. Cause I think I even historically speaking, I think that uh a boarded up building sitting there is pretty useless and and nonsensical, so.
But even if you raise it, it really takes away from the original intent. Yeah, the historic nature of it to me, you know, it's the I think, and I'm gonna go back, cause I've got, I've worked with HPC for years, that a storyboard put there with pictures of what it was, how it was, explaining the history of it with a medallion maybe at the base of it could be just as good.
I think those are all.
About with as an option.
It's a storyboard.
It was like two people on that board, they just weren't buying anything. They didn't want the building staying.
Yeah, and I I don't think, that's just like them saying that you can't tear a building down, but you can after three hundred and sixty-five days.
Well, the beautiful thing about a commission is all you need is a majority vote. We'll work towards that and.
Help on that one.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's um puzzling to me the code enforcement requirements. If you have uh to keep that building, have roof pointing up more of things like that. Structural soundness, safety center conditions, time you hit that fifty percent. Then when you do it, you gotta, you've got to code enforce it to the day standards, which could include free boarding. And so I I find it puzzling that maybe HPC's maybe not.
Yeah, it might be.
Maybe they need a little bit.
Personal wishes versus legal wishes.
This is all.
Real, real quick. I'm sorry, I interrupted. I apologize. The Charles Taylor Building wouldn't count as uh, cause, cause we according to the plan, we're going to renovate that space and use it as the headquarters. That wouldn't count as a historic heap?
Um I think because it's not.
Those, I got the medallions in it.
We're gonna add those to it, but um I think because of the year that it was built, like it wasn't built, you know, in forty.
Gotcha. Well, thank you for your work on that. And uh we look forward to going to design review. Uh are you gonna talk about the FEMA meeting?
Yes, that's my name.
All right.
Um so the next thing is to talk about the FEMA meeting that um we had on June the thirteenth. And um FEMA staff has changed again. Um and they, the new uh FEMA staff decided to join us um to do introductions with us and to talk about where we are in the process. And um one of the major things that I had talked to you all about last month was the demolition plans, which are complete and have been submitted into the FEMA portal. Um those documents are rather lengthy. And um since the staff are new to looking at this project, it may take them a little bit more time than it would somebody that's been on with us for some time. And that's one of the things that they did um share with us in the call, um that they do have those plans and um they are um in review of those plans. Um and we actually got them to them early. Um they would expect them to get them in the next couple of months. And you know, we got them to them um the first of this month. So I'm happy about being able to give them something to look at early. Um also, um FEMA and HUD have been meeting um to discuss um the environmental assessment. And they're trying to decide on who's gonna be the lead agency, which we've been pushing for for some time now, for someone to step up and say that um they're gonna be the lead. Once they determine that, um we'll know the process for the EA. Whether we'll have to have two done or whether we'll be able to have one, because they are talking about doing an agreement to only accept one. And that way we won't have to have um the city finish doing um their review and also FEMA doing a review. Cause both of them require an environmental assessment.
So the MOU or the agreement that we had with the city, wasn't that for the environmental assessment as the lead agency?
No, not as a lead agency. So what that was, I didn't, it's so many steps. What that was, I was told at one point, we needed to have that agreement so that the city could complete the environmental assessment on behalf of HUD, not FEMA. This is for HUD. So once we got started with that, because this is a historical site, we needed to do the MOU between the agency, the city and the state historical.
SHIPPO.
Right. And so we did that. And for several months, SHIPPO put me on polls saying they needed to review it. And when they did review it, they came back to us and put me in tears to tell me that we don't need it. She told me that we would need a programmatic agreement with FEMA because we're gonna use FEMA funds. Right. So from that point, um SHIPPO and FEMA were supposed to discuss the approval of um us moving forward with an environmental assessment, which hasn't happened to this point, which is why we brought in um asking a request for HUD and FEMA to talk about the EA assessment so that we could get moving forward.
Well, on all that, we not forty-two units down in Craven Terrace. And that's an HPC. Have you ever got your?
It was not an HPC, but it was considered a historic, they, historic site, different, two different things. So that's the difference. They did not have to go for review, but my question would be is, we hired a FEMA consultant, shouldn't they be running all this interference for you?
And and Valerie is doing so well.
Uh absolutely. For Sydney on the call, she was running.
Taking this all for you and putting it on the consultant.
And and she speaks the language and everything that that all of the agencies and I mean, my eyes got crossed and I was not watching the meeting, I was listening to it like uh but all of the, all of the organizations involved, all the groups involved, she's, Valerie's gotten all the information to them uh ahead of schedule. Uh so everything that we can possibly be doing as an organization has been done. And really, we are uh relying on the mercy of the infrastructure of disaster and HUD and and public housing in in trying to work it out. What I am happy about is it has been broken down into three separate phases. Um and so they are dealing with uh each different phase individually, uh which had, which wasn't done a few months ago. They, they were trying to eat that elephant at every, at every meeting and 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 so that I feel as though Valerie is pushing uh pushing the the cart forward and and we'll see demolition uh sooner rather than later.
Just, you know, maybe even for you at some point, I'd really urge you to um talk to Bobby Astor. He is just an unbelievable whiz at this whole process. FEMA inside, and he's dealt with historic stuff. Everything in the city has been driven by Bobby through a consultant, but he may be able even to enlighten, I even though Valerie knows it, sometimes it's, he's a good education piece. I can't stress enough how important he was to the city.
Yeah, Bobby and I have talked and and I'll continue to talk to him. But what what I love about Valerie uh is she seems to know not just the FEMA side of things, but also how to navigate the public housing side of things. And as uh as Amelia said so eloquently uh in our finance meeting tonight, uh housing i- is its own, is its own bear. So we're really wrestling a lion and a bear called FEMA and HUD. Uh and you know, Tiffany's stuck in the middle and she's doing a great job holding up. So uh kudos and uh my uh my uh sincere felt gratitude and uh appreciation for the work that you're doing.
Yeah. Um so and then the last thing that I wanted to talk about tonight, and again, please, I ask for you all's cooperation. I am trying my best to schedule the training for you. And it's really hard to get you all together outside of this date. So um and and Commissioner Outlaw, he's the only one who says, I'll come anytime. And I appreciate that. And he responds so fast.
Two days, aren't you?
Two days, yeah, I'm talking two full days, two full um eight hour days. And um I have uh moved it to August, if we can get August settled. And um I have August the seventh, the eighth, August the ninth, the tenth, August the fourteenth, the fifteenth, and August the sixteenth and the seventeenth. And I've had um two commissioners outside of Commissioner Outlaw to respond, um which was on two different days. It was the fourteenth and the fifteenth and the sixteenth.
Okay, I I never got the one, the August dates. That's why I had that question. So I can tell you right now, I would be available the fourteenth, the fifteenth, the sixteenth and the seventeenth. Those are the two. Yes, those uh in August. The first two you gave in August, I'm not available.
Okay, well, so far, those are the only two um that I've had people respond to that.
The later dates?
The later days.
And I prefer the sixteenth and the seventeenth. I know I put fourteen, fifteen, I I put that week, but yes, I prefer the sixteenth instead.
It would be great if anyone else can prefer the sixteenth instead.
I can, I can definitely do.
Okay.
The pressure's on.
Um I'm, I'm happy to do the sixteenth and the seventeenth, except the sixteenth, that will be, I will not be able to be present until nine AM. I don't know what the schedule.
Will be, okay, all right.
I don't know what the schedule, the the hour schedule will be, but I I won't be able to be present physically until nine AM. But I'll, I'll call in ahead of time if if that's necessary.
Okay.
Well, I'm left with no choice. I'm gonna take the plan. So sixteen and seventeen it is.
Yay.
Thank you all so much.
That was one thing.
That was easy.
One day on the schedule we are on right now, and that's one of those days, but you know, I'll take a sacrifice. I'll take one for the team.
You're the boss.
But yeah, I got it, sixteen.
That's all I have.
Thank you for that. And uh, you know, with this FEMA and and uh HUD, you explained it to me the other day, I live out here with a headache. So thank you for what you, what y'all are dealing with. I'm glad you're on the phone and on on with it to uh to help console her after the fact or whatever.
That's about all the help I was.
But thank you, Ms. Askew. And this time we have uh. Yes, please.
I just, uh just in some of my notes, revised MOU, Jamie, where are we at with that? You know, are we from the last time?
Laurel, Laurel Street.
Laurel Street, I'm sorry.
They have not uh responded back to us yet.
They have not, okay, I just.
But not having.
Yeah, I did touch base.
Is that a problem for us? Will that hold us up in any way?
Not, it depends on what they decide. Say we're just, just taking a long time and it's fine. And then, no, if they wanna rewrite it, then.
Yeah, maybe. Okay, I just wanted an update on that. Okay.
I was, I was also gonna ask Mr. Chairperson, um would this be an appropriate time uh to uh commend Ms. Askew on finishing her executive director training? We wanna commend you on finishing your executive director training. Uh it was a two-year-long process, uh eighteen-month process. And I know it was a lot of travel and uh the benefit that it will bring the organization is really appreciated. And so we, we anticipate having representation there to cheer you on when you walk across the stage next year.
Thank you.
So that is, is it awarded at the convention each year at the annual? That's when it's awarded. But do you still get the status of it? Um and or not until then? Cause that's a six, you have to wait six months.
Technically not till then, like they, um it's through Ruckus University and they give you a um.
A diploma.
The one we witnessed, it was awesome.
Yeah. And do we know when that thing is? It's in January usually?
It is, um.
Where it's at, so we can plan ahead?
Like right after.
If you will send it out to us, at least we can get it on our calendar, maybe start preparing it for those of us that want to attend. What city is it in this year?
Um San Diego.
San Diego. And we get to stand up and shout and hoop and holler and 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 make a New Bern ruckus.
And last time I was in San Diego, last time I was in San Diego at a convention, they had an earth trailer. It was the first time I've ever felt it. I was in the chair and just happened to look up and I could see the chandelier go like this. And then the chair went boom, boom, boom. And you I froze. I mean, but that was it. Then there was nothing else. But woo, scariest thing. I don't know.
We were petitioning the most hard that there would not.
Yes, please.
You know.
I'll petition the most high right.
Uh but congratulations on that.
Yes, thank you.
And very competitive. It was just, it's good.
It just represents a lot of extra work outside of the normal, the normal call of duty. And so kudos. Uh I also wonder, this would be an appropriate time to talk about uh Juneteenth and entertain, uh entertain discussion of the future of that. Actually, you can do it.
Well, I, when I came in today, I did ask why we were at work, because I know it's a federal holiday and HUD is a federal agency. And then she said, then Ms. Askew said was because we never voted on it, but I didn't know. So here is your schedule. You have twelve holidays. I think what we need to discuss is, do we want to make it thirteen holidays? I don't know if HUD allows that. Or um or we make it, the city of New Bern, just using that as an example, has made it a flex holiday. So what happens is they still have twelve holidays and you can take Juneteenth as a paid holiday in exchange for something else. So we can, you can look at that, we can however you want to do it. But right now we have um well, this for twenty twenty-three, a little different for twenty twenty-four, but uh we had Monday, January second, because we had a uh Sunday was January first. So we'll always have January first, uh Martin Luther King Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, two days at Thanksgiving. So Thanksgiving, the day after Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day and New Year's Eve, so that the day before New Year's. So again, uh I guess that would be discussion for the board to decide what you would want to do going forward.
Well, how much does it cost? I mean, first thing we need to know is how much does it cost to have a holiday?
I don't know what it.
We can get that to you. This is kind of like a last minute thing, but if you wanna wait till next month.
I mean, that's fine, cause it's passed now and it's not gonna impact us. It is the normal procedure. I know again, and I'm sorry that I use the city as an example. It's just my frame of reference. But every year, we approve the calendar for the following year. So usually like September, is it September, October? We get a a list of holidays and we say, okay, we approve this for the next calendar year. And maybe we should do something like that so we could deem it appropriate. We can get the information and.
And so that's what we do in the ministry. September, October, we just forecast the next year.
Right.
Do you guys run on a fiscal year or or an annual year?
Fiscal.
No calendar.
Oh, no.
January one.
But that's our fiscal year, like somehow it's in June, some in late again September, but I was just happen to be the.
Yeah, you call it calendar year, fiscal year.
Yeah, I was just happen to be the actual fiscal, right, I mean, the actual calendar year.
Okay. So I mean, maybe it's just an agenda item for September or October for us, just to uh have a list of potential holidays presented. So.
So we could see what twenty-four looks like, because sometimes depending on when the holiday falls.
Yeah.
If it's on a Sunday, you have to take the Friday or the Monday or something like that. So I think that would be appropriate to look at the calendar for twenty-four and then based on that. But um I.
September is the month you want it.
Yeah, I think that would be fine. I, I just didn't know if HUD was mandated by federal rules, though, because it is a federal agency. And they, they have deemed Juneteenth a federal holiday. Was not sure how that was handled.
They haven't done that yet, but if you want to recommend it to them. Surprisingly, they have not.
Well, at the very least, I just wanna recognize Juneteenth and wish everybody a very happy Juneteenth.
Thank you for the color, beautiful.
That's all.
That's good.
That's all I have.
If you have more questions or concerns for the executive director? All right, we will have the uh report from Ms. Simmons of New Bern Towers.
Good afternoon. The occupancy rate, my occupancy for New Bern Towers, if uh four units, a hundred and sixty units occupied, one oh one. Uh occupancy rate ninety-five percent. Total vacancies, uh units, vacant unit is found. One bedrooms, three. Two bedrooms, two. Move-ins, three. Move-outs, two. Zero transfers, approvals, five. In-process, fifteen.
You can yell at me, honey. I can't get, can, the numbers don't make, don't, don't add up again. So, so if you have, if you had three people move in, three units move in, so let's say um last month, your units were, or let's just say a hundred and, hundred and one, or you're saying you had occupied. Three move in, two move out. So I I couldn't get that to add up, let's see, from last month. Last month, you had a hundred. So three moved in. Right? And two moved out. That was one oh three, two one oh one. Okay, I was taking it from the one oh one. And three move in, that would have made it one oh four, two move out would have been one oh two, but you take it from the month before, correct? And that's how you got that. All right.
Look, we spent two hours going.
I know, I'm sorry. There were no transfers. And I appreciate, and the transfers are great. There's, and the number of bedrooms. Yeah, that is, that is so helpful because, yes, thank you. I appreciate that. I know we aggravated the living snot out of you, but.
Well, it had us to look very closely.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Well, this, this is a question I got for both projects. You know, in city government, at any given time, you might have an, have a balance of forty percent. When all the taxes start coming in after September, you have fifty percent. You might have sixty percent. When all the bills start getting paid, you don't have any money coming in with exception sales tax. It might be twenty-eight percent. And I'm knocking on the door of a hundred and six units and a hundred and one of them will have an occupancy. I know that fifteen up there. My question is, generally speaking, do we in fact have that? The fifteen in progress, well, I understand there's a hundred and one units occupied. Now, if I'm knocking on the door, would a hundred and one people this afternoon be in those units? Or is, what I don't understand is the, the fifteen in process.
That's application.
But I mean, are you in any way, like some of them might be uh twenty-four hours from being approved, some of them might be twenty-four days from being approved. What?
It doesn't matter. If you get approved, they go on a list and then it moves up, uh you know, so.
So, I mean, tomorrow would, would it be? Could that change? I'm just trying to get an idea. Is, is the ninety-five percent of an absolute.
Ninety-five doesn't have anything to do with those applications. Yeah, it didn't have anything. All fifteen of those people may not be approved.
Yeah.
And and then we try to make sure we have people ready to go in here as soon as we can, so that we don't have units, um you know, unoccupied for, you know, months. We try to stay ahead. And that's, and that's the process that we go through it.
That makes sense.
Also to your question, Commissioner, if you were to knock, uh if you were to knock on the door tomorrow, uh this report is as of the thirtieth of last month. So this is a reporting on last month. And so if you were to knock on the thirtieth of last month, those numbers would be accurate. Is that what I was saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. The total account receivable, charge, thirty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents. Received, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and eight three cents. Received thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and eight thirty cents. My unpaid, four twenty-five, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Chair, ninety-seven percent. Year-to-date unpaid balance, three thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. Non-payments, five, zero criminal activity, other violations, zero. Work orders, outstanding requests, two. One, um, last month is put up there. From last month. And the request received twenty-one, completed twenty. Pending repairs, zero, pending for us, two. And then AC.
Can you go back up? I'm, I'm so sorry. Did, did you have pending evictions up there?
Yes, that's all, termination. I like the word eviction, but.
Termination, I apologize.
Yeah.
Thank you.
How long do you let the non-payment go for? I mean, is it not, they, they become pending terminations at what? After sixty days of not paying or ninety days? Or is it thirty days? Or how does that, how's that work? When does it get into that category?
No, go ahead. You speak. Thirty days. You'll be trying to work with them though.
Yeah, I, I would assume you would.
Yeah. They'll come in and they might say that we have, um, RCS or some program that's paying for them and they get a, um, a plan letter, a pledge letter. So we try to work with them before we.
That's what I was thinking. It would be at least sixty or ninety days past when they were supposed to pay. And then they would go on that list, but prior to that, they wouldn't be on that list.
I notice H V A C units do, I noticed that in the report, it says something about something stolen.
Um, that's on the, that's on the flooded units, not, not these.
But what I'm asking is, when something supposedly stolen is a police report made or is it just assumed? I mean, no worries, there's not probably a lot of value there, but does anybody know where those units got off to or could they, what the salvage value would have been or? Is it not a big deal?
I mean, actually, um, charged the guy who actually stole the units.
So you did it and stole them?
Yes, sir.
And police report, no?
Yes. Big application they sent back to me to have to peel back out. But he has been charged for the units that we actually seen him on camera taken.
Um, do you have any monetary value on what was stolen?
Um, well.
Five thousand bucks or a thousand or?
It was over a thousand, it was from maybe.
I just read that. I didn't know how much to speak to. I, I assume that you guys probably found a police report.
Police report totaled five, fire reports, zero.
Right, right?
More questions. This question from Ms. Simmons. Thank you, Ms. Simmons, and, um. Mrs. Jones, put it up with that.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Ms. Minor from the Trent Court.
Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, for, um, Trent Court, we have a hundred and ten. The occupancy rate is ninety-four percent. We have seven vacant units, one, one bedroom, two, two bedrooms, and three, I mean, four, three bedrooms. Units. We had two move-ins, zero move-outs, one transfer. We have nine approved, three in process. Um, for the tenants' accounts receivable, charge is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-one cents. Received was nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, twenty-five cents. Unpaid for the month is nine thousand, six hundred, seventy-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. The tar rate is sixty-seven percent. And the year-to-date unpaid balance is twenty-five thousand, seven hundred, fifty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. But non-payment is twenty-two. We had zero criminal and zero other violations. For the work orders, we have zero requests that is outstanding. We received twenty-six, twenty-six was completed, zero pending repair and zero pending parts. For the police report is, um, twenty-four and four of those were assists for other agencies. And we had one fire report, which that's the re-transfer. The one transfer was from the fire.
Gotcha. No one was hurt or anything?
No.
Okay.
The year-to-date unpaid balance and those terminated for non-payment. How, how much of, do, do we know how much of that is going to have to be a write-off?
Not at this point.
You know, it reminds me, almost COVID, it's almost twenty-five percent of, uh, you know, got a hundred and ten units, real a hundred and three. So it's almost twenty-five percent, uh, pending termination. Um, and I know during like COVID, of course, that's what those numbers looked like during COVID. Is there, do we know what? Is, you know, is there something that we need to help residents with? Is they, they don't have jobs, they, you know, reason for the non-payment?
Um, I mean, this is the business that we're in. We're in low-income housing and a lot of times other things are more important than rent. Um, and I don't think we can really change that mindset. I wish we could, uh, but I mean, that's just.
What can we do to help?
Nature of the beast that we have here. And it's always been like that from my twenty-plus years.
So the, these ratios don't, don't necessarily concern you as an expert in housing?
Uh, no, because it, I mean, it's just something that, I mean, we just deal with in our business, um. I mean, and that's one of my, um, concerns when I got here about not having any resident services. And, and we do have resident services and we, you know, we're out there to try to support the residents that we have, but we just got to get them to be willing to pay the support that we're trying to give to them.
As social work one-on-one, all you can do is present an, uh, uh, an attractive alternative, uh, an opportunity, if you will.
Can, can I just say one thing?
No.
I need to say this. Okay, so it's just like when we say, um, resident A, go to RCS. Go to Ms. Nancy at the Salvation Army. Go to Mr. Joe down at Catholic Charities. When the questions be asked. So if you are working, why you did not pay your rent? So sometimes that leads them to get even less, because then they feel like as an organization, if I was at RCS, okay, so why are you not paying? And I have to pay all of this to keep you on track when you're going to probably do the same thing again.
Yeah.
So that's, that's all I need to want to say. So we do, we are concerned about that, but it's something that we can't.
Get control. No, I, I, I totally agree. I just didn't, you know, when it was those kind of numbers, that was back during COVID. And people just weren't working, so they couldn't pay the rent. So I didn't know if it was a s- something that said they're just not working or.
Okay, but, but still.
They're choosing to do with their money what they're doing.
Like, uh, you were getting the stimulus, you were getting extra things other places. So all the other stuff is just excuses to me. I mean. I'm finished.
Mrs. Jones, um.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the, uh, on the work orders received, completed, I will kind of turn around time, y'all, you can get with that. Because these are good numbers. It's, I'll turn around, depending on what the job is.
This air conditioning unit, uh, would have to get some outside help, which is cool now. I'm trying to, boom. In-house.
Okay.
But usually, emergency, we have to go to within twenty-four hours. But as soon as we get them, I just try to get them done.
Are you still using contractors to put, uh, to turn apartment units?
Uh, we have, but now we're at a point that we are somewhat caught up. We can do it.
Okay.
And, and just to share, Mr. Jones does not like to have outstanding work orders, so. Probably won't have any, because it really bothers him.
A big change.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
Absolutely. I saw a lot.
Neither do we.
Definitely the residents also, let's do those. Appreciate that. Thank you, uh, Ms. Minor.
You're welcome.
Any more questions or concerns from Ms. Minor? If you have a response for you.
After me, so can I ask you about, about a, something, an available space, if you don't mind? Available space. I had somebody to contact me about trying to get into Trent Court who couldn't, and you might be able to answer the question.
Okay. And you say after?
Yeah, after.
Okay, you got to be brief, because I have to get to the daycare.
Okay, no problem. Is that, is that okay? I don't know that I have it, but if I could.
Six, three-nine, fourteen-nine.
Yes, ma'am. I will call you.
I can drive, uh, could y'all speak in?
Yes, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, you know. But it is a work number.
Not your personal number, but your work number.
They got it now.
As they should.
I'm not even where it's supposed to happen.
But thank you for the report, Ms. Simmons. Next, we'll have a Ross Program Report, Ms. Huggins.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Participants are, is fifty-three percent. Non-part, non-participant is forty-seven. Case management is ongoing. Prairie Community College classes, leadership base one and two is continuous. Partnership opportunity, resource opportunities is still ongoing and the list is growing. HUD requires evidence-based needs assessment for sixty-five and older, total seven. There's no changes with that to report. There are two, um, personal aids. Health and wellness, that's still current, child care services through DSS. No, no waiting for full-time workers. Prairie Community College has a scholarship enrollment program that is still continuous. There are two, um, new programs that, um, I talked about for the Mediation Center of Eastern Carolina. They have teen court summer enrollment for volunteers. Um, teenagers starting at, um, between fif- fifteen and eighteen. They have a peer alternative for men up and girls empowered. Um, and they can call that number. We've got brochures and they can call the number and contact it. Contact them and the representative will let them know exactly what they need to do to enroll. Transportation, arts and omnibus schedule is still current. However, they have a new location, eleven oh six Clark's Road. The services will not change and the schedule will still be on the same. Home ownership class, Habitat for Humanity, the workshop. There's going to be, um, a new date right now. They're still working on there. Also, um, I have a new class that came open. It's Citizens Police Academy. For Trent Court residents and open to the public. It's a ten-week course. It's available in August. The details will be arranged, however, the class size is sixteen and they only have two seats left.
Oh, wow.
Wow, good job.
And, um, we had a good turnout for the outreach event, which was May twelfth, ten resource partnerships, thirty adults. Twenty children. And also there's a financial literacy workshop. It's going to be held at the New Bern Towers in their social room, June twenty-seventh, between twelve and two P M.
Ms. Huggins, are you, are, are you the, uh, the, uh, the Housing Authority Representative on the Homeless Coalition?
Yes, sir.
So thank you for attending this. I appreciate the work you all are doing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
So that concludes my report.
It's, it's, it's so wonderful to hear joy in your presentation, your voice when you're doing your presentation nowadays. Because I do remember when.
Yeah.
But, but, but what that says, your, your labor is paying off. You know, you didn't quit. You didn't just get, go through the motions. You've been staying at it, staying at it. And we, we appreciate that, you know, we, we appreciate that. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Do you have any programming, uh, with NC Works that, that you're doing currently?
Well, at, at the meeting, um, I was able to, um, talk to one of the representatives there, um. So I think it's in Mr. Tony Wanda.
Tony Wanda, he actually talked to me about it.
So, um, he's, he was trying to tell me how to get connected with the NC three sixty.
Yes.
So that's something that I'm going to start working, you know, wars and, you know, learning that program so I can get better at it.
Absolutely. That was going to be my recommendation. And I'm going to have to tell Tony about speaking before me. Thank you so much for the work you're doing.
You, you know, you all do a lot of work we don't see. We appreciate it, uh.
Yeah.
I know, I know the residents do. Just keep doing what you're doing and, uh, and, and keep working as a team as you're doing, but we just appreciate you all. I get to see y'all a few times, uh, during the weekend, not during the week, during the month. And, uh, your energy, your positivity, I just want to thank you all for, I'll get to see you soon, but. But thank you all, though, seriously.
Appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much for what y'all do. Uh, Ms. Askew, a couple of resolutions?
Yes, sir. We have two tonight. Um, the first one is, um, Mr. Jones, um, had a resolution to request, um, approval for, um, ventilation and air conditioning, um, unit disposition. And I'll let him, um, talk to you all about that.
You should have one abandoned, abandoned units. Vote Center. And it's something that, that we could, well, my general, that we could use to actually work with.
Hands on.
Yes, sir. May have bagged it three fifty to four hundred dollars there. All the units there, they're not compatible with the units we're using now, because the other ones I was taking parcels, so off of them, private people stealing them, but. It's something that the school could use.
I think that's a great idea, great idea. And other things that we have that the vote center could have, I think is a wonderful thing. And I don't think this really even needs discussion, but I'll make the motion to, um, adopt the resolution as stated.
I will make a robust second.
And you have any, Dana, you have any questions right now?
Any comments on that? And, and that, that's good. And that's good community work as well. You know, it's, it's still community work. Thank you all for doing that. All in favor of approving the, uh, resolution for the HVAC, uh, donation to, uh, Vote Center? Think about if I said aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, uh, the resolution, six twenty-three one for the HVAC deposition has been approved. The next one, Ms. Askew.
Uh, just to share, that was Mr. Jones' idea, not mine.
And then, well, usually, usually it is boots on the ground that come up with them kind of recommendations, you know. But you can't be hands-on. You can't, you can't be hands-on, particularly something that, yeah, you just can't be hands-on. It's great training. Great training. Thank you for that.
Um, the next resolution, um, is for, um, approval to, um, adopt the update of our emission and continual occupancy policy. And I'll let Ms. Minor speak to that.
Okay, so, um, in order to comply with the regulations, um, they have, uh, made changes to the over income. It's on your sheet.
Uh, I don't think.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
The sheets are still out there.
Anyone, Dana?
Just one, is it just one sheet?
One sheet.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so this right here is the initial notice. I mean, you receive like three notices. And down to the bottom, as you see, um, the limit says change. So, um, the, it's telling you the, the, what the guidelines we have to go through. We have to do initial notice, the second notice, and a final notice. And the final notice is twenty-four consecutive months of being over income. And that way it keeps the person that's just paying the flat rate for that unit. It gives them a time limit to do it for two years, because sometimes they won't, won't reach. they won't, won't reach. If you can pay the flat rate, they can her say it will give it to someone that cannot.
Right.
Okay, I, um, please consider um, these changes, and please.
Yeah, I I've done a study about, oh gosh, it's been maybe five years ago, and I asked for the rents, didn't tell me what unit it was, it just said this many units were paying fifty, this many a hundred. And so we, we had people within Trent Court at the time, this is pre-flood, that were paying eight hundred dollars a month rent, but it was based on their income. Um, the, you know, you, I think it was twenty, twenty-one percent, people paid five hundred dollars a month, which is pretty large thing, and there were, you know, we have people who really need units now or less, I think it's important that this is you know, my my point is, this is really important, and we need to do that, because it does help people to to, you know, move on and get open up space for people who are desperately in need. Um, so I think it's, you know, I endorse this, and I think it would be a good thing, but I think it's good to look at those, that data.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see that again some point, and just, again, it doesn't reveal who's paying what, it just says, you know, we have ten units paying fifty, we have ten units paying a hundred, or whatever it is, so we can get an idea of what's out there, and it'll help us to understand things in a better manner.
Um, just to share with you, since you spoke of that, um, we're working on updating our flat rent, so those rents are gonna change, and then we will share that information with you.
Okay.
So that you can see um who's paying what, um, like you said, and then you're also gonna see um an increase on the rent, um, because we'll need to take the fair market rents for a Craven County and adjust those based on, um, based on a percentage, so that we can determine what our uh flat rents are gonna be, and then we'll bring that, we're working on that now.
So those rates are not determined by HUD?
They are, but we have to do a percentage of that, like the fair market rent, I'm just throwing this out there, but the fair market rent for a three-bedroom could be fifteen hundred. But of course, we're not gonna charge fifteen hundred where we are, so we have to do a percentage of that.
What is, what is it, ten percent?
I think it's like two point four, something like that, or or something like that, it's a small amount.
Okay.
Have to adjust it to that, so I will, we'll bring it back to you, um, to show you how much they are.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
On approval of accepting the, approving the motion updated mission of the occupancy, occupancy policy. Think five, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I thought. The approval of updated admission and continual occupancy policy has been approved.
And that's a finer resolution that we have.
Any, any questions, any comments on Wayne and White at this time?
Good job, team.
Silence is, okay, just go with me, okay. I'll, I'll entertain a moment for a gentleman. All approve of all in favor of a German, think five, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
I thought you were telling me.
I am, you have five minutes? Right here, so I can tell you.